Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the ECOP Awards Trustees being held on February 17th, 2022, beginning at 6:30. Let's move on to the roll call. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Del Brizzo. President. Ginger, President Hunt.
President.
Reverend Garza.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
Amani Cresso. Good. President of the Department.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Pray for a good favor. Mr. Tomlin, we have one. We have Oak Crest Elementary School.
Good evening, Mr. Discano, President Mastegale, and all the trustees. My name is Cassidy Pujol. My classmates and I are here tonight to represent Oak Crest Elementary. We would like to thank you for this opportunity. You're probably already wondering where is Ms. Barnes, our principal? Because she always speaks at these events, right? Don't worry, she's right there. At Oak Crest, we tend to do things a little differently. One of our goals is to have students completely plan and execute presentations like this, all without adult intervention. It's also called base learning or a PBL. If that's what you need, Mr. Discano, please proceed.
Perfectly.
I would like to ask Sammy, Jackson, Aiden, and Riley to come forward and make this pledge of allegiance, followed by a blessing from God will be delivered. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible and infinite, just as for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and universal.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Oh Lord, please bless all the students who are doing presentations tonight. We thank you for bringing all these amazing people together to hear about these phenomenal things we do in this district. Please watch over us as we head home after this meeting. We thank you, God, for your continued blessings. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
And now we would like to highlight one of the amazing things happening at Oak Crest under the leadership of Miss Wong. To start, we'd like to showcase our excellent robotics club. We have more than 34th and 20th grade members that meet every week to work on our projects. We've collected broken eggs, robot builders, and robot coders. Jackson and Sammy, please come forward again and explain your robot building.
In the district, we use the Best IQ Robotics Platform. It's a simple, snap-together system where we can build any type of robot for competition, as long as it meets competition rules. This design is called FLEEN, and it can be used for the 2022 competition where we have to move balls around the course, and we can score extra points by launching them, the balls into baskets. This design was provided by BES, but it's not the best one for competition. What they want us to do is build the robot and then make design changes so it's more competitive. During our build, we learned about problem solving, critical thinking, and teamwork. Sammy, would you like to show them how it works?
Thank you.
So, and also, guys, if y'all saw how this little piece snapped off, wherever we make our robots, stuff like this always happens. Where we're...
Thank you. Could we have Emily Aguilar, Emily Lopez, and Amani Haley come forward and tell us about their coding?
We had the choice of those are code robots, and we selected coding this year. We have been programming using Best IQ Bloss, but our new heritage and legacy also use Python. We can program the controller Sam was using and the robot sensors, or we can write code so the robot works autonomously or without a driver. If you turn to the screen, here's an example of some code we wrote for a bot challenge. The goal is for the bot to successfully navigate the region. The bot has to gather food and energy as it travels. It also has to avoid obstacles and hazards. Finally, it has to beat all the enemies on the course.
You can see we programmed using if-then-else statements. We use distances in feet, inches, and millimeters. We also turn in degrees, or we use heading like in an airplane. We also code in inequalities and percentages. Here's our bot navigating through the course.
The robot is collecting food and energy as it travels through the course. It is gaining points and gaining strength. We programmed it to avoid hazards and obstacles, hazards, obstacles, and enemies. As you can see, the river is an obstacle, and it just avoided.
This technology is used in vacuum cleaners, military robots, and of course, safety equipment in modern cars. Hey, Amani, would you like to show these amazing people the robot you built at home?
Hold on a second, Amani. I would like to let everyone know that Emily Aguilar is the Superintendent's February Student of the Month for Oak Crest.
Thank you, ladies. We believe that robotics is an important part of our STEM program. It teaches us teamwork, workmanship, problem solving, and critical thinking. Being that Oak Crest is a dual-language campus, it also promotes an intercultural community. In addition to robotics, Oak Crest also has an intercultural club, running club, art club, Spanish club, gardening club, movement book club, theater club, and even dance. So there's definitely something for everyone at Oak Crest. And all of these clubs are sponsored by our phenomenal teachers. Now, as if that wasn't enough, many of the students here tonight are also published authors. We know how important it is to be excellent communicators in our world today. Oak Crest has a partnership with Life of Southside Magazine, and students compete each month to have their work published. In the February issue, we had three students publish and three others major online blog. We also had eight students with articles recently published in the Walton County News, including those by both of our Emmys and myself. We've also written articles for the upcoming March 1st issue with the prompt of "If I could solve a world problem." Could I have Riley and Jackson, please come forward and review what they wrote?
Natural disasters. Natural disasters happen everywhere. There are many different types, like tornadoes, hurricanes, droughts, floods, and a lot more. Natural disasters destroy homes, buildings, even lives. This is a big problem. Both problems have solutions. My solution is a robot. The robot will detect humans caught in a disaster and will connect with things that will be of any help. For example, if someone was caught on the road and caught in a flood, the robot would detect it and call the nearest police or fire station. This could save lives. This robot would be awesome.
Learning Spanish. Scribble, scribble. Wait, no. All right, I studied all day and all night. Why, you may ask? The biggest goal I want to accomplish this year is to learn Spanish. Here's the reason why I would love to get better at Spanish. Reason one is that I'm in Spanish classes, and when the time comes where we have to read or write in Spanish, it will be easier for me. Learning Spanish will help me read fluently and have a better vocabulary in writing. Learning Spanish would definitely help me in reading. Reason two, if I ever go to Mexico, I will need to know Spanish. For example, "When I'm ordering food," the waiter says. Hola, ¿qué pedes ordenar? I respond, "Some water and beans." The waiter responds, "Dit?" I respond, "Some water and beans." Okay, okay. I think you guys did perform. Of course, I know how to say some water and beans and things, but still, see, I was not able to communicate. Now you see why I want to learn how to speak Spanish. The last thing I have to do is figure out what I can do to help me climb this ladder. Oh, have you ever noticed that it goes like a ladder? The steps on the ladder are like the steps you have to follow to achieve that goal. When you get to the top, it is like you followed all the steps and you got to your goal. Now back to the steps I have to follow. First, I should pay extra attention in class, especially when my teacher is speaking Spanish. Also, I have to study Spanish words and do my Spanish homework instead. When I get home, going on TikTok and spending hours on my phone. One time I went nuts and said, "You have to work hard if you want to achieve something." So that's what I plan to do. What is the biggest goal you want to achieve? Thank you. Now, I wrote a short piece on cancer that I'm pretty sure will get published in the Walton County News next month.
I know someone with cancer. This disease can be extremely fatal. Do you know someone with cancer? Cancer is ruthless. People receiving cancer treatment have side effects, such as hair loss. Did you know that 10 million people worldwide die each year? We could stop more people from getting cancer by approving more checkups by the government to detect cancer cells much earlier. We could also get more government money to focus on cures for cancer instead of spending money on the unnecessary things that include $8 billion spent on solar panels that were never used. I guess we could say the government just started, you know, governing. Thank you. We have a lot of amazing students happening at Oak Crest and throughout the district. We honestly believe it all starts with you, though, at the school board. The hard work you give on the board and the decisions you make are always in our best interest and make a positive lasting impact. We appreciate everything you do, and I would like to thank you again for this great opportunity. Now, I would like to invite the parents, family members, and teachers of those students who presented tonight. Please stand. You were all doing it, ladies and gentlemen. Since I have the microphone, we would also like to send a big shout out to Mrs. Tiffany Simon and her business, Perfectly Imperfect Designs, for creating and sponsoring our new robotics T-shirts. Finally, we would like to present a small token of our appreciation to the board members. Thank you, Mrs. Discano and the board, for allowing us to showcase our exceptional talent. We will now let you get on with your important business.
Thank you all very much.
You guys are... Now, I just want to say, I can't wait to see you guys in a few years as we climb through our ladder up to our schools. And I can't imagine what you're going to be doing at that time. You're phenomenal. Amazing job.
You know, as a... victim of the education system. When I was in high school, I wasn't allowed to speak Spanish. I find this very infuriating that now we teach in other languages, with Spanish being the primary one. I think it's fantastic. I am amazed when I see these young students not only speaking it, but speaking it properly, perfectly. And it's... It takes me back when I couldn't even step on campus and say, "Hello, my friends in Spanish." That were getting thrown. So, we've come a long way in this way. I think it's fantastic.
All I have to say is congratulations to y'all. Y'all did an amazing job. And if there's anybody that has any doubt about the bright future of this country, we have an example of it right here in front of us. So thank y'all very much.
With that, we will move on to five of four awards and recognition. Mr. Discano? So, Mr. President, trustee, we have several awards and recognitions this evening. Pretty excited about. I don't think that it'll top what we opened with. Thank you, Ms. Barnes and company. However, they are going to be exciting nonetheless. Ms. Colas?
They are, but I don't want to have to follow this brilliant young lady right here. So, sorry, I won't be as amazing. Good evening, Mr. Discano, President Mastegale. We have several students that we want to recognize tonight and some amazing employees. So, the first thing we're going to do is recognize some students for our Good Samaritan Award. And I'm going to ask Mr. Traynor to come up from the high school to do that first for us.
I didn't even read glasses, so I'm going to apologize unless I apologize for that. Good evening, Mr. Mastegale, board, Mr. Discano, family, and friends. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you all four high school students who took time to see something, say something, and then actually do something. Lacyana De Leon. Can y'all come for us, I call your name. Lacyana De Leon, Raven Garcia, Kendra Alakine, and Haley Acosta de Linto. We've gone into great detail. These four young ladies were at the bus stop waiting for their bus. They witnessed an event. Immediately, they knew that what they were witnessing was not right and called 911. Before our first responders could arrive to the situation, the situation escalated, and they were in a position to assist. Without hesitation, these four young ladies assisted by removing one of the individuals involved in the incident, which is a student in one of our schools. And with the help of a parent, drove the student to that school where they were greeted with a safe environment. Our campus administrators, health personnel, and police officers were able to assist until San Antonio Police Department arrived to interview and intervene in the situation. Many times, we have opportunities in life to get involved, yet not all opportunities are taken. These four young ladies exemplify the character values we all hold high in their actions that one morning. Our community is a better place due to these individuals, and it is with great pleasure and honor that we recognize you all at this time of night. We have their parents here also. We are deeply grateful for the work that you're doing with your young ladies, because it was... What they did that day was right there on incredible. And in fact, they came to office and the interest that they had in finding out the situation and the health of the individual persisted for weeks. I'm just going to tell you, persisted for weeks. They come up, what's going on, what's going on, the little I know. Thank you.
You have some awesome kids. I also just have to give a little shout out to Mr. Lawson from Oak Crest, who's in town. He is... He's our district teacher of the year, y'all. And we're going to recognize him. So, first up for our employee recognition, we would like to call up Ms. Mary Ray. Listen, I wish we had a sack of gold to give Mary Ray, okay? She was nominated by Rene Ferguson, but really, everybody in the district seconds the nomination, and it's a unanimous vote for Mary Ray. When confronted with numerous challenges in transitioning to a new grade reporting and student reporting platform, ASCender, the A-word, as we like to call it nowadays, Mary has risen to the challenge again and again and again and again to the nth power. She has demonstrated great resolve and a calm demeanor each time a campus has contacted her with specific needs and questions. Most recently, Mary has been a saving grace for the high school campus by meeting the need to reconcile student report cards, transcripts, and other vital student information. While her efforts occur behind the scenes, the end results impact every student in the district and every campus in the district and every teacher, administrator, all of us. She has not given up. She's been persistent through every debacle, every hardship, everything that we've endured. She has been the lead person on all of the work that we have had to... All of the troubles that we had to overcome, she's been the person just making things happen so that we can carry on and move forward. And we just really appreciate her and want to give her a big thank you and round of applause for her position. And if your family is here, we would also like for them to stand up and be recognized. Next up, we have a teacher from Oak Crest as well, Ms. Maria Zamaron. Ms. Zamaron is a kinder dual-language teacher at Oak Crest. This year, she was a risk taker and took over the role as grade level lead. Ms. Zamaron values creating a collaborative culture. She goes beyond the call of duty when it comes down to supporting her team and fostering collaboration. What greatly impresses everyone about Ms. Zamaron is her level of commitment during PLCs, data talks, and other tasks. It's evident that she's working behind the scenes with her team to ensure success. She thrives off of creating unity among her team because she knows the positive impact it will have on students. Oak Crest is beyond blessed to have Mrs. Zamaron as a teacher. She's being recognized for collaboration, and if she had any family or friends here tonight, if they would also stand and be recognized. Next, if Ms. Kimberly Robinson would come up. Kimmy is being recognized for diversity, and she was nominated by Ms. Copec, her principal. Kim Robinson is being recognized for celebrating diversity on campus. Not only does she work hard each and every day to ensure her life skills, students' needs are met, she also collaborates with the campus to celebrate real-world issues. In October, she spearheaded the campus-wide activity to honor breast cancer survivors. Now, in the month of February, she is honoring Black History Month by working with our librarian to create a book display, as well as have some lessons on black history, the fine arts teacher to study black artists and musicians, and the PE coach to teach students the art of stepping. She has also organized a door decorating contest where classes can honor a black person who has contributed to the world we live in, and also a display to honor former EC graduates and alumni and their accomplishments. She continues to work hard each and every day to ensure all students are celebrated. Will Ms. Robinson's family please stand and be recognized? Family, friends? Next, if we could please have Ms. Martha Ramirez come forward. Ms. Ramirez is being recognized for teamwork, and she was nominated by Ms. Elaine Taylor, her supervisor. A few weeks ago, Legacy Middle School's entire custodial staff was out, and they were not able to report for work. So, we had our central office head custodian volunteer to go over without hesitation and gladly and willingly go over to Legacy by herself and disinfect and clean that campus. And she did it with a smile on her face. Ms. Barber got on the announcements, asked the teachers to pick up their trash, put it outside the door, and Ms. Martha went around, got all the trash, and then disinfected, went around and disinfected. Again, with a smile, all the teachers were outside thanking her. It really just... It was such a great example of teamwork in our district and how everyone pitches in to get things done whenever we need to. And we just so much appreciate you, Ms. Ramirez, and everything that you do for us. Great job. Will Ms. Ramirez's family and friends please stand up and be recognized? Next, if we could please have Ms. Tricia Garcia come on down. Tricia Garcia is being recognized for teamwork, and she was nominated by her principal, Mr. McKay. Tricia Garcia is a family and consumer science teacher at East Central High School. Her passion and level of dedication and commitment to all students is extraordinary. At the start of the school year, one of her colleagues who teaches family and consumer sciences also was out on maternity leave. And while out, Tricia was instrumental in supporting the long-term substitute with curricular resources, grading, and even delivery of the lessons. Subsequently, another FCS teacher within her department also went out on maternity leave, which left two vacancies within her team. For several weeks while her colleagues had been out due to the shortage of substitutes, Ms. Garcia quickly jumped in and recovered and covered not only her classes, but the classes vacated by two of her colleagues. Her selfless acts and willingness to take care of all students is an inspiration to her colleagues and makes East Central High School a better place to serve. If Ms. Garcia has any family or friends here, you'll please also stand and be recognized. Next up, if Lori Morgan-Roth and Naomi Tyndall will please come forward. These ladies are being recognized for teamwork, and they were also nominated by Mr. McKay, their teachers at the high school. Towards the end of the fall semester, a chemistry teacher at the high school resigned to accept a position at Region 20. Needless to say, it's been challenging to fill the vacant positions during the school year. In addition, the challenges have been exponential when there are not enough substitutes to cover when teachers are out. When the teacher, when this teacher left to go to Region 20, there were two teachers within the chemistry team that volunteered to help out the students in a vacated classroom without hesitation. Heroically, Lori Morgan-Roth and Naomi Tyndall went to task to find ways to ensure that students did not go without meaningful chemistry instruction. Whether it was directly teaching that class when there was no substitute available or teaching their current classes while streaming live through Google Meet to the classroom without a chemistry teacher, they have both found creative ways to ensure that all students were still learning chemistry. Oftentimes, both teachers were seen running around campus to make copies, run necessary chemicals and lab equipment to the classroom for their labs, or even grading work from their classes and the classes without a teacher. It's been a humbling experience to see the many ways these two teachers have served their colleagues and students. Both Lori and Naomi have quietly gone about this work for several weeks without complaint or hesitation. Both teachers are the epitome of what we aspire for in all teachers at ECISD. Their selfless service and teamwork has shown everything that is great about public educators. Thank you Lori and Naomi for your sacrifice and teamwork. We are fortunate to have you in East Central ISD. If Lori and Naomi have any friends or family here, please also stand and be recognized. And then we did have one more, and that's Kathy Bolden from the Bus Garage for Adaptability. She was unable to make it tonight. She was nominated by John Muir's. And it's, she's a monitor who has also been driving due to the shortage of staff. She's been pitching in, doing everything that needs to be done, whatever needs to be done. And we also appreciate Ms. Kathy Bolden as well. That concludes our recognitions. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to everyone for being here tonight.
So with that, we're going to take a short break so the parents can get these wonderful children home and do their homework and be able to do what they've got to do. So we'll take a short break for until 7:15. Next, reiterating, we want to do a social comment, but I believe we have Ms. Amanda Holmes. There you go, ready to the screen.
Good evening, Mr. Masagio Ford, Mr. Scott, my name is Ford. I am pleased to be here, seeing you, representing the current technical education programs here at East Central ISD. You may be aware, February is the National Career Technical Education Month. And so I wanted to take a moment to share some of the incredible things that are happening with you on our campuses. In East Central ISD, we boast an 84% CTE course participation rate. So that means that 84% of our students enrolled at secondary level participate in one or more CTE courses. And that is seven through 12th grade now. We currently offer 27 state-approved current technical education programs of study that are comprised of over 105 different courses for our students to choose from. This school year, we were delighted to add one new program of study in exercise and wellness that's going to be a partnership with the East Central ISD Athletics Department. This spring, we're going to graduate our first class of firefighters who will be fully certified with Texas Commission Fire Protection as firefighters and EMTs. And this is a really fantastic partnership that we've built with our very own emergency district, 12 out of at East Central High. We are really, we're anticipating about 350 industry certifications to be awarded to students this spring. They range from Autodesk, InRevit, to Adobe, nursing aides, medical assistants, dental assistants, and pharmacy technicians. Our 40-plus teachers are working harder than ever to ensure that our students are ready for any post-secondary option they desire. We do this by placing over 350 students in practical level courses to allow for hands-on, real-world, and relevant instruction. I also encourage you to be on the lookout for more information on the new Cast Lead La Tienda School Store. The cast students are in the development phase of their own retail space in partnership with HEB as a result of their project is going to be experienced. I also want to share a couple of student stories with you. The first one is of Aleah Paz. Aleah was a 2022 graduate of East Central High School, and she went through the criminal justice program with Officer Lawrence. She also served as one of our interns in our technology program under Dr. D. and Sam Delgado. And upon graduation, she went to the Texas Department of Criminal Justice Training Center and earned her correctional officer certificate. She now works for the Bedford County Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer. I was really surprised in November, when I was visiting the St. Clair Elementary Career Day, and I walked around the corner and saw her standing there talking to a bunch of students. She had volunteered her time during the day to come and speak to the students about her experiences not only in the correctional facility program, but also her time with Officer Lawrence. And she had shared those experiences with some of our tiniest little hornets. I also want to take a moment to highlight three of our former education and training students, Jackie R., Marisol B., and Jacob B. All three of these students applied for, entered before, and accepted various instructional aid positions as a result of the certifications they earned in their program throughout the district. And last but certainly not least, Dominique S. and Lauren L. They both served as interns through our CTE Summer Internship Program in travel nutrition. And their participation in the program along with that resulted in them being hired into our ECISD travel nutrition program full-time. This is really what we mean when we say we grow our own. These are just a few of the experiences that we are developing for our students. And I'm here tonight to thank you for your unwavering support of our CTE programs. And on behalf of all of our programs, students, instructors, I'd like to present you with the bags that were sitting in front of you earlier today. And they are filled with items that were made by our insanely talented and skilled students. I do want to take a brief moment, please, and show this to you. If you pull it up to the light, our students have transported a picture and three printed into a little shape, P T A. Mr. Paul wants to do this. Do what? Oh, yes, thank you. I thought for a minute he'd give him one of Mr. Scott's.
Thank you so much, Ms. Holmes. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Wonderful stuff out there. All right, we will move on to superintendent's reports, 6.1, President's Report.
For trustees, this much report is in your electronic packet. Please let them know if there's any additional information you would like regarding any activity that you see in this much report.
All right, we'll move on to 6.2, Markon Department Updates, Mr. Scott.
Sir, Mr. President, this is the first of our department updates that will happen each month throughout the remainder of the spring. Markon Communication and their peerless leader. Thank you very much for the trustees and Superintendent Tiscano. This presentation is actually much more muted for Markon. There's no anime to me, no wrestlers, no ninjas, anything like that. What's up, man?
That's it, sit down.
Well, we're going to do just cut and dry here. So priority one, teaching and learning environments. Markon continues to be the main vein of communication with our community, especially throughout the pandemic and all of the things that had resulted in different crises along the way. Again, the Facebook, YouTube lives of Superintendent Tiscano gave us real-time answers. We provided signage publications, as much assistance as we could during these sort of crises. On the flip side, and not a crisis, that's pretty fun. We also began surprise swag day visits at each of the schools. Each campus selected classrooms based on merit. Kids got to spin the wheel or play Plankton, and they got a swag item, which is a t-shirt or pen or variety items. We also took well-rounded students close to heart by having our first summer interns. Hermione and Janessa learned how to manage social media for large organizations, based techniques in photography and videography, and they even got to fly a drone. Livestreaming events, of course, over the last year or two have become essential, such as football games and ceremonies. Then they members were able to view their student safety from their devices. High-performing and engaged workforce. So this year, in regards to the website, we implemented a tracker for all of our campus webmasters. And we've held monthly trainings for all of the campus webmasters, as well as bring your own content sessions. So that way, all of the schools' websites are now pretty much streamlined and in line with the actual district website. It also makes sure that they have fresh content on their pages as well. To reach audiences that did not have access to digital media last year, we started plans in mail campaigns for 3K to targeted zip codes within Rapids to the families of three-year-olds delivering their zip codes. They each received one of these postcards. And then we also have Canva for education, district-wide, actually. Every employee, every student has a Canva account. It's a Canva for pro account. It doesn't cost them anything. And so we have held monthly trainings to help out with comprehension, listening design, communication. Inclusive and collaborative partnerships. So adapting on the age of COVID. I know some of you may know the Foundation Gala is coming up on March 31st at Texas University in San Antonio, which is back in person. But last year's gala was all virtual. The virtual event had a profit of $59,000, with a silent auction having a 62% increase over the previous year. And we continue to act as subject matter experts for San Antonio media, weighing in on matters related to COVID, school reentry, et cetera. We've also had a fair amount of positive stories in the local news, such as this case, that story of Woody Vadel and recertified nursing students. So resources not always excellent. We continue to upgrade our equipment and resources that are in our budget. We continue to push swag incentives. So we are ordering new t-shirts that Sam and our student intern Patrick designed, their Star Wars theme. Basically, every mascot of the district is morphed into a Star Wars character. So that will be coming out soon. We're also going to have Fiesta medals, I believe, for the first time. We're going to have them definitely for the gala and then also as incentives for the students and staff as well. And the Community-Based Accountability System Report, produced annually by Markon. We printed a small number of those booklets, but we're able to track the number of digital views that the report receives online. And so at conclusion, we continue to be a trusted resource from the community to receive news and information. As we evolve, we like to create studio space to host our own newscast. We've been talking about that for a while and just seeing how that would look. But to do our own daily or semi-daily newscast, that way we could tell our own story. We have continued to strengthen our brand with a consistent approach to our brand already existence. We use that in ways that align with our strategic campaigns and achieve the maximum results. For example, more swag, as I mentioned. And community events to further our messaging and brand alignment. We play a pivotal role in family engagement. From promotion to execution to analysis, we want to make sure that every event achieves the intended outcome for those that participate. And in this past year, we also started our district's official Instagram and TikTok pages. Those are geared obviously more towards kids. And so we had our summer interns launch those for us. And our current student intern is also keeping it up to date. But we've already hit 1,050 followers just from midsummer to now on Instagram. And like I said, we're going to turn our messaging facing towards the students on those particular platforms. Facebook, Twitter will be for, you know, parents, older audiences. But we want to make sure that the students receive our messaging as well. So we'll be focused on that. That's not on ninjas.
Move on to 6.3, 2021-2022 District Control Board Corner 2.
Sir, the district external scorecard for quarter two was compiled by campus principals and department directors to provide an overview highlighting their quarter two projects. Each campus and department's signaling is included in this report. For each key question in the district's Community-Based Accountability System, there's a link to the external scorecard in your electronic packet. And in that link, you can see tabs from quarter one to quarter two, and then of course we'll add quarter three and four. But tonight, Dr. Ford is going to provide a highlight of our quarter two indicators.
Good evening, Professor Masagio, Mr. Tiscano, board of trustees. So when you open up your scorecard, the digital link, this is what it looks like. On the left-hand side, you have a table of contents. You can click the links there, or you can use the tabs down at the bottom. And so when you click the, when you click the quarter two external scorecard, this looks very familiar to you. This is what I wrote to each quarter. On the left-hand side, on the first column, you have the pillars. These are based on our Community-Based Accountability that our community designed for us. And then these are the CPAS, Community-Based Accountability Key Questions that our community wrote that they have asked us to answer in regards to things that they find most important around what they hope for our students. And so this, along the top, you'll see all of the campuses and then the three big departments, which is BOSS, Business Operations, and Student Services, no? Support Services. Sorry, that was hard tonight. Critical Inspection, and then Student and Community Engagement is the last one. And so then when you go down, each campus and department have signaled where they are. At the very bottom, there is the key. Can you say you have Dell versus Mac? Sometimes tricky for me. And so if you remember, the blue and the green and the orange, if it's an orange, it signals that they are making a big change this year. If it's a green, it's a minor change. If it's a blue, it's either they're maintaining or they might be considering a change this year. So that's how they projected out what they were going to be focusing on for the year. So those things have already been signaled on early. And then on the left-hand side, you'll see the OT, the A, and the SR, the pound sign, and the C. And that's what they signaled on for this quarter to say, how are they currently doing? So that's the key for you to kind of just see how each of them signal. Then on the quarter two big ideas, what they've done is they've gone through and said, okay, so of all the things that we signaled, here are some big trends that bubble up for us as things that we're either celebrating or trends that we see that we're going to be working on, something that we're going to be working on. So every campus and or department identified two to three things that they're either celebrating or they're going to be working on this quarter that they're like, this is something that kind of bubbled up as a big thing that we want to work on or something that we're celebrating and we want to continue to work on. So some of those things that we saw district-wide are, our campuses are still celebrating and still working on bringing kids back. We had our Omicron COVID surge, and with that surge, we had students that were out and our attendance dipped a little bit. And so we are continuing to support students' reentry back into school. You saw a great example this evening about our use of clubs and student engagement in those clubs to help draw students' interest. And so many of our campuses are doing very similar things as what O'Grady shared with us so gratefully tonight about really trying to tap into those things to help show and really look at how will we learn our academics and how do we apply those to kids' interests through our clubs and things that kids love. So those clubs and organizations are things that all of our campuses try to work to engage our kids in. We are the second semester of second, fifth week, or not week. We really work on helping our students with after-school, with our tutoring, in-school supports for those students that are way behind and need some extra support. In the first quarter, you all so gratefully helped us with recruiting our RFP for our tutoring after-school at middle school and high school, and that began. And so those students that were selected started those services, and we've gotten some great immediate feedback for the students who are participating. So we're involving students and for those students that need some extra support in those different types of programs. Any questions that you might have?
Mr. T, could we get a hard copy or a detailed set of that? Home time or whatever it was?
Single track.
Yeah. From each school, I could do with two friends.
Yes.
All of the other schools.
I know this is very new, it says the CIS one year.
Yes.
I know I touched on that a little bit. You don't have that at your campus, do you?
We do.
Do we, the community's in school?
We do. We have a CIS. We do have, that's new. We had something, not everyone had one last year, but this year we added one to every school. Yes, yes, it's good aid, it's fantastic, but it's.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we will move on to six point four, upcoming events.
Trustees, a couple of things in your February/March calendars. First and foremost, just a reminder, the badge of governance campus is March 2nd to the 5th, although a few of you already know that side, Camry, if you're interested in registering and attending that conference. The registration is still open, I believe, so if you're interested and can do that, give the Camry please. In March, just a reminder that the week of the 7th is spring break, and the board's next regularly scheduled meeting is on the 17th. And then, as Brandon mentioned earlier, on March 31st at 5:30 PM at Texas AM, University San Antonio was this year's EC Foundation Gala. I haven't answered any questions, so I think that's a good indication. Of course, you got your refrigerator calendar of events as well, lists all of the spring activities. We've got softball, soccer, track, baseball, softball, you name it, you know how the spring is, with the student activities, the extracurricular activities. Calendar is filled with it, so if you have opportunities, get out and support the students, they'd love to see you.
We will move on to the action agenda items, seven point one, 2022, 2023 district calendar.
Sir, trustees, we're bringing you tonight for your consideration, the proposed calendar for the 2022, 2023 school calendar. It is linked there in your electronic agenda, and Dr. Fuller will talk a little bit about the process we used to get feedback to inform any adjustments we made from last year to the calendar we're proposing tonight, as well as kind of point out some of the key changes there, so.
All right, good evening again. So we sent the calendar out for feedback at the beginning of January, and we received 627 participants, 281 thoughts, and 6,903 ratings. So it has a really good participation. Out of that, some of the big takeaways that we had, big feedback, was they liked the change in the format. So if you've seen, if you've seen the calendar, so it used to be like this way, it was black and white, so now it's this way, and it's color-coded, and it looks different. So it is, they liked the format, they, so they appreciated that. So some of the things that they liked were, they appreciated that we started in the middle of August, they liked that we finished before June, and they wanted us to keep that. They, we had changed on there, the spring break, we used to have this year, we have spring break the first week, and in the comments, we had put spring break the second week for next year, and we explained in there the reason why we were changing it is to align with animal colleges, because most of the students that we have go to a tech animal colleges, and animal colleges in the calendar that they had put out already have changed their spring break to the second week. So we've changed ours to align with theirs, so that there won't be a conflict with our kids being off at a different time in college. And we got some really good feedback from parents, and said they liked the later date in March, so we kept that there. They liked the, they did ask for the Monday after Good Friday to be a holiday, and it was not scheduled to be that, so they did ask for that. So we did a little bit of rearranging to work to make that happen. So what we did was originally, on the published calendar, we had our school year ending on the 25th, which is a Thursday. So we pushed that back to the 26th, which is a Friday, and we took that extra day, and we took off and made that Monday after Good Friday a holiday for every Monday. So we were able to make that happen, and now that's a holiday for every day, so we hope that something that community enjoys. Some of the other things that they asked for was in January, in February. In February, we have two staff development days. Typically, we take a staff development day like we did this year after the Super Bowl. That is typically a really low student attendant day for us. Students typically don't come to school that day, so we have that off. And then that's a bad day for us, because that's right around the time that we get diazepam for our meal of the year. And then the Monday after, we have a planning day, which is a day for the next quarter. And so those two days are saying, they had asked, and this wasn't a huge thing, but there was a little bit of, I think, one or two comments that said, could we consider President's Day, which is actually the 20th of February? When we looked at that, we took that into great consideration, we talked with the principals, we looked at our calendar, and the concern that we have with that is, those two staff development days that we pushed them down, it would not be advantageous for our teachers in receiving their data that they would be getting back, because it would be two weeks later, and so it would push their planning back, and it wasn't the greatest bit that we felt like, and also because then we would probably have to move that Super Bowl day, and we were more worried that we would have more kids out on the day after Super Bowl than we would on President's Day. So we felt like we would keep those two days on those two Mondays. The other things that we did is, on the calendar, when you see it, all of the professional days are in blue, we put a dot on the four days specifically that are new teacher only. So you'll see those differentiated, and so on the 26th, 27th, 28th, and 1st, you'll see a dot there, those are for new teacher only, they are professional development days, but returning teachers will not come until August 7th. The calendar does include the required 75,600 minutes, like it does this year, same amount of days for the semesters as it does this year, just a little bit different, spring break and a few different holidays.
There was no concern about graduation being, is it again Memorial Day weekend?
No one said that. That was not even one comment, was it, actually?
I'm surprised, yeah. I mean, if there was no comments, then that's good.
Yeah, that one. The other thing we're trying to do on this new calendar is put the comments, put the dates with what is indicated underneath the month, before it was kind of down to the right. Hopefully that helps with readability and helps with the.
Awesome. We're good? Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. President, our approval of the 2022, 2023 district calendar as presented.
We have a recommendation from superintendent to approve the 2022, 2023 district calendar as presented. Do I have a motion?
Follow.
I have a motion from Mr. Victor Bartha. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Ms. Del Brazil. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Voting carries. All right, we'll move on to seven point two, 2021, 2022 Remote Conferencing Resolution. Mr. Tiscano?
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, if you recall, remote conferencing was an option presented to us about a condition of education this year, we went into those three years with the likelihood of pandemic implications. And so while districts were not funded for remote instruction, remote conferencing could be provided for students as a way to provide academic continuity if they were out for a qualified reason, meaning medical reasons, and not just COVID, could be other extended reasons, but for the most part, and this already existed as an option by the way, which is why the commissioner may brought it forward for everybody to be aware of, that when a student had to be quarantined this year, we stood up a remote conferencing option at every school, so that when students were in that quarantine period, they would continue to receive synchronous support, and that they would have access to asynchronous content and instruction through their Google classroom, and it would be managed by a staff member sequencing. And so we've had more than 1,000 students, well over 1,000 students, take advantage of that this year, but the limitation is that they could not exceed 20 days of remote conferencing in a calendar year. If they were to exceed 20 days, we'd have to bring that individual child to the board for approval of a waiver to be served through remote conferencing beyond 20 days, and that would have to happen for each and every student. So at this point in the year, we're at the point where we now have two students in that situation, and we anticipate with a few months left in the school year that there will be more. And what we're bringing to you tonight is a resolution essentially giving me the authority to approve each of those on a case-by-case basis on behalf of the board trustees. This would give us the ability to expedite these approvals and not have to bring each individual one to the board. The likely, if we were, we were not bringing this to you this evening, we would likely be scheduling frequent special meetings so that kids aren't in limbo waiting for the ability to be served through temporarily through remote conferencing. So we think that this is the most efficient pathway to continue to serve students who find themselves in need of remote conferencing beyond 20 days. Be happy to answer any questions the board has. We have the resolution attached. In fact, the author of the resolution on behalf, Rob Deck, is with us tonight. If you have any questions about the language in there, we have to answer those the best of our ability.
No, about how many kids we have, are they getting close to that threshold?
So we have two currently, and we anticipate three more in the queue, but we just anticipate that as we move through the spring, that there could be some circumstances where we'll start to see a rising number.
Any degree of grade though?
Just Dr. Fuller, take my grade though. I know that two of them are junior high students.
They're mostly, yeah, the ones that we're considering are secondary. So it just depends on if, you know, if they get sick or if they're out. Most of the time, they're out for a couple, you know, perhaps 10 days. If they get sick again, is when they would have to be out again, so it's not necessarily consecutive.
In our procedure group, just as a reminder, this approval has to go through the nurse at the campus. The nurse, they can assess the circumstance, collaborate with the family and the family physician to verify whether this is a qualifying condition. And then based on the nurse's recommendation, then we'll consider approval of remote conferencing as a short-term option for that particular student to maintain instructional continuity. So we feel like our process has been very effective. We struggled early on to put attendance procedures in place to account for this. It's kind of tricky, given the guidance from TDA, but we feel like we've got it in pretty good control now. Also, continuity of staffing, having a reliable staff member manage remote instruction in each individual campus has taken us a while, but we stand up. Where we are today, we need to deliver a pretty good service, and currently, being that this last variant surge has seemed to be waning, we're seeing fewer and fewer students out of quarantine, but with months left in the year, what we've been through the last 24 months, again, we're just anticipating that there'll be more students throughout the remainder of the spring to find themselves in this situation. We just don't want to have to bring each individual one back to the board for individual.
What were we doing in the past?
We have never done remote conferencing.
I mean, no, if we're kidding, missed 20 days or more, do you have to look at that in the past?
Oh, if they were going to miss 20 days?
Yes.
So if in the past, we've always had access to remote conferencing, had it fully deployed, what we typically had is the students are out for medical reasons long-term. One way that we serve them is if they qualify for home now. The other way we've served them, not be, if you're talking about a kid maybe who was out for, you know, had knee surgery or something, and missed a couple of weeks of school, then we just work with the family and they, you know, get work after the fact, and it wasn't as affected as what we did at the point now where they get, they have access to their, every teacher's Google classroom. This is one of the benefits of the pandemic, right? You stood up Google classrooms, they have fresh content on there, kids can have access to every instructional resource that their classmates are getting each and every day, and they can interface with their teacher daily through Google Classroom. They can turn work in, get feedback from their teacher back, and that's not what we've done in the past.
So this is an improvement over what?
Much improved, yes, sir. And then we have an adult on Google Meet live, so if a student's working through Google Classroom and asks questions or is struggling, they can interface with an adult and can facilitate getting those questions answered and getting that certification from their teacher. So it's a much improved way to serve kids, and again, it's a benefit of the pandemic, quite honestly, but without the ability to offer remote learning at all, this is kind of a stopgap in its work for these short-term quarantine circumstances.
And it seems reasonable and makes sense. When you mentioned TDA, what's coming up on the horizon with them and the legislation part of the virtual instructors? Will that, I know, will that impact? Will that, I know, will that impact this as well? This is a resolution like this year. And then we anticipate, I mean, I know we can't predict in terms of COVID, but how will virtual instruction be impacted by that legislation in terms of?
Yeah. Yeah, hard to.
I know you don't, I mean, I know, I know, asking a crazy question.
No, it's not, it's not a crazy question. It's actually all the way through the very special session, there was some legislation to authorize it, but it didn't make it across the line. So I think that from a political standpoint, it seems like there is resistance to provide remote learning as an option for traditional ADA funding at policy level. Do I think it will resurface as?
So we'll just have to keep doing what's reasonable for us until the actual. Okay, I was just curious. I know we could be the only school district with this situation. And so I was just curious.
This resolution will stand until we do.
Yeah, so this resolution actually has an end date of June 30. So it'll automatically expire this year.
But we can revisit if we need to.
So yeah, so we'll revisit it for next year. Of course, again, what you're authorizing tonight is if a student goes beyond, is going to exceed 20 days. What if doesn't require board approval is the ability to offer remote instruction for qualifying conditions for up to 20 days throughout a calendar year. This is in the event they're going to exceed 20 days.
And is there a maximum number of days they're allowed to?
Twenty. To be honest, I don't think there's a maximum. With, yeah, with approval beyond 20 days?
There's no cap?
No cap. But each qualifying condition has to be approved independently. So there can't be an indefinite approval. Like just because it gives past 20 days and I say, nurse recommended it, this condition, this kid's quarantined. Now that they've got this extended approval, it's not indefinite, it's for the quarantine period.
So that leads me to another question. So once they get to 20 days and there is, they go past 20 days, is there another evaluations to, you know, because this goes for 40 days, you know what I'm saying, is there?
Yeah.
So how do they come back?
So they, so we don't have kids that are out 20 consecutive days. What has happened is we've had kids that quarantined multiple times for five days and five days and five days. And the aggregate throughout the years, it's now it's 20. And so now it requires approval for beyond that. Now each qualifying condition requires a nurse's evaluation, collaboration, parent and physician, and then authorize that this is a qualifying condition. So let's say we have a qualifying condition for a kid to have remote conferencing for day 21 to 25. They got to come back after the quarantine period is over and then they go get approved again because they have another qualifying condition in their nursing. Yeah.
Yeah, that would just let me do that. Yeah, I answered it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the remote conferencing resolution delegating authority to superintendent to act in place of the board to expire on June 30, 2022.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the remote conferencing resolution delegating authority to the superintendent to act in place of the board to expire on June 30, 2022. Do I have a motion? Have a motion from Del Brazil? And a second from Mr. James Poynter? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to consent agenda. Is there any point, like anything pull from the consent agenda? No. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion from. Do I have a second? I have a second from Claudia Barantos. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry. All right, with that, I'm going to pass the board here. I had it wrong, I'm sorry. All right, we'll move into executive session. Executive session pursuant with the Texas Government Code 551.071, Attorney Consultation Concerning Legal Issues Related to the Trustee of Same Number Districts resulting from the 2020 census. And we will go into Act 756 PM. All right, as stated, no agenda deliberation regarding the purchase and exchange lease of vagrable property and also the superintendent's review. We also discussed the closed session, although I stated it out loud before the closed session began. The board ended its closed meeting at 10:08 PM on Friday of February 17, 2022. No action was taken and closed meeting. Ms. Brazil?
I know that the board create a redistricting ad grant review committee with each board member selecting one citizen to participate on the committee.
We have a motion from Ms. Del Brazil, all in favor? Oh, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Monique Priestus? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Were the acronyms again? Rec?
Rec.
I move the board authorize the superintendent or his designated negotiate and execute our real estate sales contract within the perimeter discussed in closed session in a form approved by legal counsel.
We have a motion from Claudia Barantos. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay. Second from Victor Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're done.